Good evening, everyone. I'm calling this meeting to order at 5:32. Roll call, please.
Mr. Allen.
Present.
Mr. Baltimore. Ms. Daniels.
Present.
Mr. Koplinsky. Ms. Reed. Ms. Wilson. Ms. Williams.
Here.
Thank you. So this evening, we're here for the third hearing on an ordinance on Bill 6, 2014, which is a change to the current zoning code for the city of Harrisburg. We've had several questions last night, and we had a few questions the first time we introduced the bill. So hopefully, you can all participate, ask questions. The more questions you ask, the better it is for us. And what we'll do is we'll go ahead, have Ms. Jackie Parker, Director of Community and Economic Development, present what the changes mean, what they look like for the city, and we'll open it up for discussion, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. And good evening. First of all, I would like to point out that we do have handouts. If you didn't get one, there's a handout of the PowerPoint itself. There's also a handout that explains the history of this particular proposal. And also, there is a synopsis of the zoning code, so that in case you don't get the whole fat package, you can see what most of the majority of the changes are in just a few pages. I'm going to talk about the -- we will go over the history of it, what it looked like before, why we need it, why it's important for the city, and discuss some of those changes. I am not a planner. As a matter of fact, the only planner here this evening is Tim Riordan, who's the Executive Director for Tri-County Regional Planning, and we work very closely with the county. He was part of the first design of the zoning code that started back in 2009, 2009, and he was part of that. So it's very important that he's here. Our planner is in Brazil, and he was at the game this afternoon. I'm sure he was sad, but he's there for this week. So I'm not the expert, but I will point out some of the key pieces for this zoning proposal. Thank you, Christine. She's going to give us the right map. So make sure that you have the handout, because that's very important, so you can kind of look along with us. So as I said, for this evening, we're going to talk about the background and existing zoning code. We're going to talk about a comparison, what it was like before and now, and then specific proposals, the next steps, and then open for questions. So the city had a zoning code back in 1950. We had subdivision and land development codes, changes in 1964 and 1990. We had state and federal regulations that we had to implement in our code, floodplain management, stormwater, air quality. All those things are mandated by the federal government. We incorporated that into the code. And then the Municipal's Planning Code of 1968 also dictated that there were some other changes and amendments. So all along, we have been amending this code, but we really have been sort of limping along with a very, very antiquated code. Just for example, part of our code now dictates where we can put a telegraph office. So obviously, there are. Since we don't need any more telegraph offices, those are one of the things we might want to think about removing unless we think they might be useful in the future. We have the zoning map divides the city into open space, residential, commercial, and industrial zoning districts. Zoning regulations are specific land uses which are allowed in each zoning district. So if you look at the new zoning code, you can see things that are permitted, not permitted, or special exception permits permitted, which means you have to come in and talk to the zoning board for those special exceptions. Includes development standards such as setback of buildings, how far from property lines, the height of buildings, and lot coverage. We talk about signs, and we talk about off-street parking. So the evolution of the current zoning code, as I said, 1950, there were 11 districts. 1967, there were still 11 districts. In 1977, for some reason, we wanted to make more districts, 21 districts and four overlay districts. And by 1988, there were 29 districts and six overlays. So when you look at this map over here and you see all the different colors, that's how many zones we have, which is really difficult to work with if you're developing, if you're trying to grow, if you're trying to think what should be in what places. That is just too many zones. So we're trying to simplify it, narrow it down, make it more flexible for development, for growth, and for what the city would like to see as they look forward and how Harrisburg should look. So that map on the left is the new draft, the 2014 zoning map proposal. So as I said, the problems with the existing zoning code since 1950, they have zoning districts increased from 11 to 29. Also, pyramidal zoning. So pyramidal zoning means that you open up the book, and you want to put, as you were saying, a home office, but you look in one section, and then it refers to another section, and then it refers to another section. So you are constantly going through the zoning code and trying to figure out whether or not you can put a home-based office or a home-based shop in your home. And that's just one example. So if you're a developer and you're trying to figure out if you can put, you know, a residential or a restaurant or a theater someplace, office building, you have to kind of look at page to page to page to page. And we're trying to simplify that, so you can just figure it out by looking at one section and one description. So there was incorrect zoning in many locations. There were provisions, like I said, of home occupations and certain residential zoning, inadequate public notices for special exceptions and variances, because we had so many zones. We have. So this is the 1950 zoning map with some of the revisions. You can see it better in your handout. This is the current zoning map. This is the proposed zoning map. You can see it's a lot, a lot simpler. So why do we want zoning? Very, very important. It's to protect and preserve existing neighborhoods while encouraging reinvestment and revitalization, to increase opportunities for decent, safe, and affordable housing for renters and owners, to protect and foster appropriate expansion of existing institutions, including capital complex, hospitals, public and private schools, university, and other uses, to increase the protection of historic resources, including historic neighborhoods. And we have a lot of those. The architecture in Harrisburg is very lovely, and the national register properties. To protect the Susquehanna River, which is one of our assets, and prevent development practices which harm water quality. And so also, the development along the river or even back from the river is very critical because we don't want to pollute the river. We want to protect the river. So stormwater management practices, as you develop, are going to be very, very important. To increase opportunities for open space and recreational opportunities. We have 27 parks and playgrounds, and we want to make sure that we have a lot of that protected and protect those recreational opportunities, including the completion of the Capital Area Green Belt, to provide additional access to these amenities for all neighborhoods, and to encourage mixed-use development near the Harrisburg Transportation Center, which is the train station. And there's been a lot of interest in that over the years as an anchor to development. So you have the train station, bus terminal, a place where people can come and go from the city and access it easily, come into downtown, access neighborhoods, and so that area can be a real anchor for mixed-use development, which means commercial amenities like restaurants and coffee shops. Services should be located near there, so people who need to access those services could come in by bus and then access them easily. So the draft zoning code proposals condenses zoning districts from 29 to 9, which is very efficient, seven overlay districts into four, reclassification of parcels to open space like Wildwood Park and other areas, reclassification of parcels to institutional, like the institutional district, State Capitol, Hack, and other institutions, the expansion of a downtown boundary, and decreasing industrial zoning in South Allison Hill. Home occupations are permitted in all homes now, and rooming houses permitted as accessory uses only, so we limit that number of high-density, what we call single-rooming house opportunities, and we keep better track of them if they're only allowed in certain areas. To encourage the use and expansion of alternative transportation modes, including light rail, bus rapid transit, and pedestrian and bicycle modes. To encourage the redevelopment of vacant industrial parcels in the downtown and neighborhood areas. And you'll see that some of the downtown center, that's a new designation, incorporates some of those vacant parcels, because we know that they can be reused for something very exciting and dynamic for the downtown. And then to implement the goals and policies and strategies of the City of Harrisburg Comprehensive Plan. And many of you know, we are beginning that comprehensive plan effort, and that is very, very important to the city. We haven't had a comprehensive plan here in the city of Harrisburg for many, many years. And what that is going to involve is all of you, all of the neighborhoods, all of the residents, to meet with us as we talk about every section of the city. And we're going to incorporate issues that, like transportation, we're going to incorporate parks and green space, stormwater management, where we'd like to see businesses and what kind of businesses. Do you want that availability of mom-and-pop businesses in your neighborhood? What do you see for walkways? What is walkable and accessible? So a comprehensive plan really is very exciting, and it should be a very fun initiative and fun for everyone to kind of come to these meetings. You'll be hearing more about that. That will probably take about a year and a half to two years to actually put together and implement. And so we want to make sure that our zoning is complementary to that, and so that's why it's really important that we talk about zoning as it involves planning. The overlay districts are the floodplain district. Again, that's mandated by the federal government, because we certainly have flooding issues, and so how does that affect property? Airport zoning overlay district, because we're close to the airport. Municipal historic districts, we have six, and architectural conservation overlay districts, which protects actually the fabric of an entire neighborhood. So all overlay districts exist in the current zoning code, so they're going to remain. So the format of the draft zoning code is the regulations, as I said, are streamlined. Development standards for each zoning district are contained in one chapter. Sign standards for each zoning district contain in one chapter, and the pyramid zoning that I was talking about is now eliminated. So you don't have to go from page to page and chapter to chapter to figure out what you need. So that's what it used to look like. This is what it looks like now. Very, very easy to kind of go through and see all the zoning districts, what's permitted, what's not permitted, or what could be permitted by special exception. So the history of the draft zoning code, in one of the handouts, it talks about the fact that this is not new. This is not a new document. It actually began back in November of 2009. The planning department for the city began this initiative and said, you know, we really need a new zoning code. So they began with an outreach to neighborhoods. We have all the nonprofits, all the areas of the city where the planning department actually had meetings. People were involved. We have documentation of their comments, remarks. So from January to February of 2010, the Planning Bureau holds 14 meetings with neighborhood groups and other organizations, as well as three public meetings. In March of 2010, the Planning Bureau compiles public comments. And May 5th, the revised draft, so they revised it again and again, revised draft 2010 zoning code was released. As I said, in November of '29, the draft zoning code was posted on the city webpage, and January to February of 2010, the Planning Bureau held the 14 meetings. And there was more input after that, and as you see through your, if you look at your calendars there, it went forward actually until last year. And so what we're trying to do is make sure that this document that had a lot of input and a lot of hard work is now going forward to the city council. That's why we're having these hearings, so that we can better understand what was planned, what was presented, what was worked on back in that time, and hear public comments now on that document. So the next steps are the vote on proposed zoning code on July 8th to begin the comprehensive plan for the city. And I said, we're beginning, just to get started on the scope of work and what that's going to take for a comprehensive plan. The zoning code will complement the comprehensive plan, and the zoning code can be always tweaked to support the comprehensive plan. So as we move forward with the comprehensive plan, we might see that, oh, you know, there might be something that we might like in one area, something we might not like as we go forward with the planning process. And so we can always tweak the zoning code as we move along, and it's supposed to be fluid. That's the whole idea, is to make sure that the zoning code is complementary to the comprehensive plan, and that also should be very, very fluid, an active document. So I think with that, that's the end of the slide presentation, but not the end of the discussion. And I wanted to bring up Tim Riordan, who, as I said, is the Executive Director for the tri-county regional planning commission, and it's very important that he give a few background notes on why it's important and his part in the process.
Thank you, Jackie. Stand over here, sit on my back to you tonight. Again, my name is Tim Riordan, Executive Director at Tri-County Regional Planning Commission. I am not here in a capacity with Tri-County Regional Planning Commission, nor am I here in a capacity with Dauphin County Planning Commission. I am here because your planner is in Brazil, and I was asked to provide some technical assistance should it be needed. A couple of things that Jackie said. Both your zoning ordinance and your comprehensive plan should be dynamic documents. As opportunities come up within the city, the city should be in a position to address those changes and not create a document that is going to sit on a shelf for 10 years until some perception is we need to do it again. As things happen, we need to be ready to move and accommodate that. To the issue of why are we doing this zoning now versus waiting for the comprehensive plan, you have a zoning ordinance that's effectively 1950. Jackie alluded to one of the more obvious sources, telegraphs. We don't use those. That could be stricken. There's a number of other issues in there that would also lend itself to changing the zoning ordinance. The other parameter or measure is when people come in for special exceptions and you have a difficult time or you have too many of them, for something that makes sense, you need to be looking at addressing that. And this zoning ordinance will definitely assist the city with some of those issues and allow them to process reasonable applications. The zoning ordinance can always be amended. As we move forward with the comprehensive plan process, issues are going to be identified that can immediately be addressed if so chosen. This will lead to another zoning update or zoning amendment at the end of the comprehensive process. And that will be with the direction of the citizenry of the city and all the public input that's going to go into that. So there's nothing illegal with having a zoning ordinance prior to a comprehensive plan. It's unusual, because the thought process is, let's figure out where we want to go, and then the zoning ordinance is a tool to implement that comprehensive plan. But you do have a comprehensive plan. You do have a zoning ordinance. So we are working towards putting them in the best position to help the city move forward as it moves into time and moves itself out of the recent situation. So that's about it.
So thank you very much for your presentations. I think right now, we'll just go ahead and open the meeting up to questions from the audience, and technically, how do we do this?
Do you want me to stand up here?
Yeah.
My name is Steve Leingarten. I'm here tonight representing Dallas Realty. Dallas Realty is the owner of 815 Market Street, which is the old post office. My partner, Charlie Courtney, was here last night, so I'm not going to repeat. It was a long discussion last night, and I'm not here to repeat it. Just my understanding, well, just to back up, this is simply, this is a building that is being used for industrial uses, for warehousing, manufacturing, and so forth. We think it's a positive for the neighborhood, but it is going to be rezoned from industrial to a downtown center. And as my partner talked about yesterday, that really does not protect, the nonconforming use does not protect that kind of use. So I think at the end of the meeting, hearing last night, there was a discussion, can you come up with a couple of simple options that might protect your client? We sent it to Tim early, and by the way, Tim and Jackie mentioned, you know, flexibility is important, and so we're asking for a little flexibility to break that right up front here. Let me give a piece of paper here.
You're just handing the whole back while we're discussing that.
The options are, in fact, very simple. There's two options. One is you change the map. The map currently has this property zoned. It's purple. We would propose to change it to the industrial, which is the gray. So the first change is doing nothing more than changing the map to allow this. The second is to, and I think there was a discussion, again, I wasn't here yesterday, but there was a discussion that, well, the nonconforming use protects you. And really, all you need to do is, if you've got industrial uses that are currently being used, that a building is currently being used for industrial uses, you can continue doing that. And as we talked about yesterday, that's not really what the nonconforming use section says. So basically, what we said was that buildings, large buildings that are currently being used for industrial uses can continue to be used for industrial uses that are permitted in the industrial zone. And literally, that's all that the option two says. So the thought was, if we can make either of those changes, essentially just change the zone that the building is in, or change the nonconforming use to, I think, conform to what the discussion was yesterday, then the owner of that property is comfortable with the proposed zoning ordinance. Any questions about what we presented?
So for the council members, if you have questions?
To that point, just a question about that particular area. We're talking about the area of Market Street towards Cameron Street. So that area has now coded downtown.
Downtown center.
And it had previously been industrial?
Correct. It's what it is right now, manufacturing-like.
And the thought to change that is why? It's been largely industrial.
Well, it became very apparent that the train station is very active with the Amtrak discussion, Penda discussion. And if you read the Bridge to Bridge report that was done by Kredik and other developers back in, I think, 2010, that is a very dynamic area to make it, you know, mixed use. They were thinking of hotels, amenities, because the train station is going to be very active. We're hoping to make that more bus, train. CAT's very interested in being there, so that all the people there can change there. And so it'd be very exciting. And when you look at that corridor, that really should be, you know, more dynamic for the train station. And as I said, there certainly are more discussions even now about that train station. So they thought the downtown center, when people call and say, hey, what's available in the downtown? Okay, that's not in the downtown. That's in the industrial area. So now, this is the downtown center. So it's that building, it's the Patriot News building, it's all those buildings that come down, the one that's empty with the trees growing out of it, that would all be part of the downtown center, and a little bit onto Cameron, so it ties it into the downtown. Because when you come to the train station now, it's a bit in corridor. So that's what they were thinking. And I think we're pretty excited that that would be the dynamics of that. And as he mentioned, you know, the nonconforming use does allow him to continue that use until something else happens. So he's not affected. He just keeps going, doing whatever he wants to do until the time when, at such a time when he, when you and your partner might like to do something else with it, that would be mixed use, sell it, develop it, but now it would be downtown center.
Although, just in terms of the protection, and we won't get into this discussion from last night, but the protection for nonconforming uses, to continue to do what you're doing now, but basically, about a third of the building is being used for some warehousing and some industrial, manufacturing, and so forth. But there's arguments that, well, if I, again, if I change the location of that business, if that manufacturer that is currently doing X now does widgets instead, in other words, so therefore, there is actually a very substantial concern. Again, if one-third of the building is being used right now, what if we expand that to the entire building? Also, you've got an abandonment concept in your ordinance that says, if you're not doing it, then your nonconforming use is viewed as abandoned. And so therefore, if we can't get a tenant for six months or a year or two, has that been abandoned? So again, the concept that we're protected now doesn't fully protect us. I mean, a tenant, or the lenders of these tenants, is not going to accept the concept, oh, you're protected by nonconforming use. And so the goal we're doing is saying that the concept of if you are currently doing an industrial use, you can continue to do industrial uses, plural. You know, in other words, you can, so that's actually what option two is. I mean, if we can say that, we can actually say that if you're in a building that is being used for industrial uses, you can continue to use it for industrial uses. It's a very simple change. It's not a substantial change. The courts have been very clear that this is a permissive change, so we don't need to, you know, have more hearings and so forth. And so again, that's what the option two is. It is just basically to sort of put in writing what Jackie was saying, in a sense, which gives the owner of the building the comfort, that in fact, it can continue to do industrial uses. Those industrial uses might look different, though. It might be a different manufacturer, or a different thing, or a different size, and so forth.
So just to clarify for the record again, what's the abandonment period?
The abandonment period is the building must be abandoned, or not anything inside. It's the whole building that can be abandoned for at least, I think it's up to a year. And then even within that year-time period, if you want to start it up again, it still remains the nonconforming use. And I think what they're talking about, and it deserves probably some longer discussion as we go forward, to talk about his recommendations, is, you know, what he's talking about, things that are done inside. What's being done inside? Well, right now, it's warehousing. You know, as we had mentioned, there's only one mercantile, you know, license that's coming out of that place, and that's theirs. And so anything here, and you can see what's allowed, all the uses that are allowed in there, those would still be allowed as he goes forward, and whether it's, you know, all these different things. It says moving and storage. He talks about warehousing, welding, all these things can still be there, whether it's half the building or all. And like I said, it deserves some more.
Well, hopefully, if, again, if what Jackie is saying is correct, we're actually okay with that. If in fact, we can take our one-third of the building, in fact, do it for the entire building, and do all of these uses, we're okay with that. So I think that our concern is that the language doesn't fully protect, and so that, literally. And so therefore, I think we're actually on the same page, and if we can have the language in option two, which I think pretty much says what we're talking about, then we're okay with it.
Okay. So I'm going to go ahead and kind of slow this, because we've discussed this, and please communicate with Jackie. Also, yesterday, I asked your client to send me the information, and I didn't receive it. So make sure that you include me in those communications as well, so that I know what kind of amendments I should be recommending, or whatever. Ultimately, it's going to be, the amendments will come from us.
Absolutely.
So council needs to have that information.
They need to send it to the city clerk, not to you.
Yes.
The city clerk. They need to go to the city clerk for documentation. So then, he will then disseminate it to the rest of the council. So that's the first logic. The city clerk needs to receive it, so he can log it in and then forward it, and he will then forward it on to the committee and the rest of the city council members.
Thank you very much.
So let's go to any other questions from the audience?
Good evening. My name is Mr. Boyd, and I'm here for about 20 people in Allison Hill this evening, worrying about the word regenification. On the hill, Allison Hill, a lot of people are worrying about now, that you're talking about going into properties and making sure that certain things in properties are not rooming houses, things like that, and understanding what that code will be on State Street. We're talking about an industrial area, this and that. But what they are worrying about basically is the word regenification. After a long period here since 1985, as they kept saying, nobody has even thought about this, what we're doing now. We have a new administration now that's moving very fast, very fast. But then, we also have to remember that this city is not worrying about how fast you move, but how accurately you do things. And that word is a key word for where I'm from and where there are 20 other people that are desperately worrying about the word regenification. So once again, like I'm saying, and I'm always going to say this, the little guy always doesn't get it. We made a statement last night about special exemptions. Any of the residents get that in writing, what that'll be? The ones that will be special, and the ones that will not be able to be special, will we get that? So we can understand what's going on. Because once again, there are a lot of people where I come from that's totally in the blind, and disgusted, and very angry right now, that this new administration is moving too fast, and other things that need to be done in this city and addressed are not being addressed. Okay? But thank you very much, and I'd like to ask But thank you very much, and I, like I said, the special exemptions, I'm only asking that perhaps that area of the city, they understand exactly what is going on, and the word, once again, regenification, because I know what that means, and surprisingly, that's what this looks like. But I hope I'm wrong. Thank you.
Thank you. So one of the things that makes this coding ordinance so easy is that actually, if you look at page 17, every category has what is permitted, not permitted, and what requires a special exemption. So if you look at the map, do you have the parameters of the addresses you were referring to?
Which addresses? He's probably, where are you talking about, from State Street over to Market?
That's it, that's correct.
State Street to Market? No, most of those are homes, most of that is in, most of those are residential homes, and then there are, there's, there are businesses on Market Street.
Right.
But most of the time, where he's talking about is between probably Walnut Street and State Street, and then from 17th Street down to Silver Terrace.
That's right.
That's all residential.
Okay, great, long as I.
They're all residential, there's nothing that's coming in there that we know of that's going to change from, you know, making them, they're currently residents today, they're going to be residents tomorrow, unless, you know, I mean, it's too small of a space for a big business to come into today. The only thing that's open on that street happens to be where that warehouse is, where Hatacap for Humanity uses it to store things at, right near 13th and Walnut. But other than that, they're, it's still a residential zone area.
All right, that's all we need. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
My name is Wayne Black, a dentist, and I have a dental practice on Clinton II. Will I need a special exemption to continue to practice there, the nonconforming use thing? Currently, I have residential slash commercial, slated to go residential.
Is the address again?
It's between, it's between Raleigh Street and Harris.
1612 Clinton II.
Well, one, whatever use you're currently using that property for will be grandfathered, and then you could continue to do that so long as the use isn't abandoned. But I can't tell from the map because of the street, it's too small.
It's a yellow one for sure.
Look at the yellow one there. Between Raleigh Street, take Raleigh Street and go to Harris. And it's on Second Street, use a little, it's a little alleyway right there for Harris.
What's the code for that?
Residential?
And it's on the left-hand side going down Second.
RM. RM? And it's...
He's my dentist.
So you know exactly.
I know where he is, he's my dentist.
And she doesn't want you to move, apparently, either. She won't want you to move, apparently, either.
No.
So the answer was, is...
No, she's looking, she's looking.
The answer is you can continue doing what you're doing. If you're asking if you were to stop that use, whether or not it could come back, if it was abandoned, or if you wanted to change.
I guess my follow-up question would be, upon my retirement, assuming I retire at some point, if I continue to sell it, or decide to sell that practice, if somebody continues that use, does that exemption?
Yes.
As long as the property, as long as the use is continued, it will be over that sentence. Unless you abandon it for a year and decide not to, otherwise, the abandonment rule will then be invoked.
Yeah, and I just looked it up for RL, that could be a nonconforming use. So if it, if it gets abandoned, then, if the dentistry usage is abandoned for the 12 months or more, then the next person couldn't be a dentist. Other questions?
My name is Natasha Sawyer. We're here regarding the home zoning, and if it's approved, it would be great for us. We've been kind of going through the process of trying to get our business in-home, but they don't allow it in our area, residential home. So we did everything that was necessary, I'm a little nervous. We did everything necessary, and I even asked the questions when I first started everything up, to make sure it would, you know, be, work in our area. I did ask those questions when I went into the office, filed all the necessary paperwork. Everything was told was fine. There was no, nothing there where we could look and say, hey, this is where we live at, that cannot be zoned. It just wasn't, it wasn't friendly, and I think it should be more friendly, because it wasn't. But I did ask the questions. So when everything went through, it couldn't, it wasn't able to be, be approved. So I'm like, I did ask, and I was told a lot of different things. So told us about a special exemption, so that's extra money, you know, the variance. So we did, we followed that process, and went before the board, and it just, they told us it would have never been approved. So to me, we're having, you know, we did something that wasn't going to even happen. And we just, it's been a long, lengthy process.
Question, what type of business were you trying to?
Daycare, in-home daycare. So, I mean, unfortunately, we were trying to do in-home startup, everyone doesn't always have money to just go out and do big things, you have to start small, and then branch out. So when you've exhausted so many things, and you get a dead end continuously, and it's like, well, I wouldn't even done that, because she said it would have never happened, period, point blank, said go to city council, they're like, that's not how that works. We had come, we were coming downtown every day, please tell us what to do. Somebody, please, we talked to so many people, probably were tired of seeing us.
Maybe you'd like to give us a list of the people that you were talking to, and then we'll take it from there.
Okay, I just, I just wanted to say that, because this would be beneficial to us, and it's just been long and exhausting, but this is something that, this is where our heart is, and we're just trying and trying, so I just wanted to say something.
What's your address?
2039 Whitehall Street.
Yeah, top of Whitehall Street.
Other questions?
The gentleman right here has some questions.
Actually, I have a number of comments and questions. My name is James D. Ross, I'm here on behalf of the Greater Harrisburg Association of Realtors. I've been a member of the Association of Realtors, active in this area for 43 years, and the past 37 years as a commercial broker with NAI-CIR. And I also was a former elected official, so I very much respect what you're doing as elected officials. I served as a township commissioner at SSW Township, and we went through a rezoning process, a comprehensive plan, and whatever, when I was there. So I'm familiar with this process very much. I would say generally that it's good that you have fewer districts. The problem that you have is that your permitted uses are overly restricted, which will result in many, many more nonconforming uses. And that is not friendly to the citizenry, it's not friendly to the, to the businesses here in the area that want to come into the area, or want to expand in the area. It is a definite drag on business development. To go through the process of a special exception is lengthy, expensive, and time is money. It's a very serious problem. And just to illustrate something that happened here not too long ago, I've been involved as a, formerly as a co-founder of the Delta Community in Harrisburg, which was at 2041 North Second Street. The Delta Community merged in with Gadenzia, and the facility at 2041 North Second Street has, which was formerly six apartments, that we converted to an office, an office space and two apartments, and then Gadenzia decided that they wanted to convert it back to six apartments. Made us go through a very lengthy process of special exceptions and variances, it took over a year. This is nonprofit money that was being spent in that context, and was very, very difficult and time-consuming. This is the kind of thing that you will have with too many uses not permitted in the various zones, and you're, you're going to generate much more activity here for special exceptions. And that means if people get tired of that, they're not going to come into the city, they're not going to expand their businesses, they're not going to expand opportunities, which I think is exactly the opposite of what you want. What I want is someone that practices here in this area. I would say, and I've gone through and reviewed the draft ordinance, and reviewed all of the permitted uses, and the map, and whatever. I've marked this up, and there's, I've circled all the, the uses here, which I think are overly restrictive, and I think we provided this earlier as...
We're going to, it's part of our...
Okay. Which are overly restrictive, and will require a special exception. This is a serious matter. I mean, in these pages here, there's probably, probably close to 100 things I've circled in the, in the ordinance, draft ordinance. In addition to that, there appears to be inadequate density for large apartment buildings in areas where apartment buildings or multifamily is permitted. The density is not fully defined to what I can see in the, in the draft ordinance here. In addition to that, I believe that multifamily should be allowed in the RM, CG, RF, and IN zones, and they're currently not permitted in the zones, or require special exception. I have a question here with regard to the 100 and 200 blocks of State Street, why they are zoned now, or proposed to be zoned, Riverfront. I used to own many buildings on the 100 and 200 block of State Street. We bought the buildings, we refurbished them, we leased them, over the years, we sold them and such. I'm very familiar with that area. I don't understand why that's zoned Riverfront, as what's proposed there. And also, much of the downtown area between Pine and Forester Street is zoned commercial neighborhood. It's as if that isn't part of the downtown. What most of us think of that as downtown, but it's zoned commercial neighborhood, which seems a little bit out of sync or whatever. There are also very few commercial general areas throughout the city. There's probably a little more need for commercial general zoning areas, or expansion of that particular zone. And the downtown center area, in my opinion, is too large, and not reflective of the current uses and improvements there. That's been stated by others, including the gentleman sitting in front of me at this point. But as a general rule, if the market is going to bring an opportunity for development there for alternative uses, that's something that can be addressed. But at this point, to make it more difficult, creating nonconforming uses for existing uses there that are industrial, to make them downtown center, I think is a mistake. Another comment I would have is that the signs are very restrictive, the size of real estate signs, in particular, something that we take note of for large buildings and such, the signs are still required to be a rather small amount, appears that it's 10 square feet, which is not commensurate with what is normal practice and such. Now, I understand everybody wants to try to regulate things so they're not overly gaudy and, and whatever, there's some decorum and such with it, but if you restrict business, if you require special exceptions, if you require extra processes for people to do business and expand their businesses in the city of Harrisburg, you are going the wrong direction, and you will make the city not grow, and make the city not prosper, it will be a problem. So those are my general comments, and I've got, as I said, many things here I've marked up with regard to the permitted uses.
Thank you. Make sure that your, the information you have gets forwarded to the city clerk. Did you have any questions?
Can you just give me, you said somewhere overly restricted, can you pick out one and just give me an example of what, what makes it overly restricted? I mean, from any, I just want to get a sense.
All right, in, this is one example, okay, of many here. The multifamily dwellings are a special exception in the residential, the RM zone, special exception. They're also not permitted in the commercial general zone. And they're a special exception in the Riverfront zone. And they're not permitted in the institutional zone. I'll tell you what's going to happen, when you start developing in these areas, there's going to be opportunities for apartments and multifamily and such. If it's not permitted or a special exception, there's another hurdle somebody has to go through. That's just one example.
Thank you. Does anyone else have questions? Any other audience member? Everything is clear? Okay. Any other questions from the council members? So I think that's, that's the end of the meeting.
Just ask them, just be sure that you forward all, I think, all of your information to city council. We stated this last night, in that someone asked a question, how serious do we take this? Take it very seriously. And so it's important for us to get the feedback, so we can sit down and at least analyze it, and at least make the necessary changes where we think it's reasonable. We'll make the recommendation for the changes where it's not. We're going to continue to work the plan, it's a process, so processes always change as time goes on. And so as we create the comprehensive plan where we believe it's necessary, we're going to make the modifications. So for you gentlemen here tonight that have questions in reference to how the uses are going to be applied, please get your information in, so that the committee can at least sit down with Jackie and evaluate it, and say, here, here's some of the feedback that we received from our community, and other people from the outside who do business, and we want to make it friendly for everyone coming in, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we have our ducks lined up as well. You know, we appreciate that you would get that to the city clerk, and then he will then disseminate it to the appropriate people, and we'll have a follow-me before we get to our July 8th, and at least get something back.
And I just want to echo too, you know, it's really clear to all of us, and I think anyone who's looked at the previous zoning compromise, that something's got to change. So I think that that is where probably everyone isn't abundantly agreeing to that fact. And to my colleague's point too, we want to do the right thing for the city to, you know, promote development, but promote responsible development too. You know, I've had the opportunity to travel to cities across the country, and I've always marveled around a city that has little or no zoning, and how awful that makes that city look. And I think, you know, we care enough about the city to make sure that we're doing it in a smart way, in a responsible way, and to protect the resources that we have in the city. And I think that's something that we have to take very seriously, and, and also to protect the residents, and to protect the businesses, I mean, it's a, there is a lot that we have to look at. And some, I've heard comments made that we're moving too quickly, well, this has been a process, it's been in works for a very long time. I don't know that we're necessarily moving quickly, but we can't just stagnate and not do anything about it either. So I personally take it very seriously, and that's why I do encourage everyone to get information in from us, we will review it. We want to do the appropriate, make the appropriate changes, and, and do what's right for the city, and make the best changes that we can with the information that we have.
And don't, don't hesitate, don't think that because you didn't ask the question during a public forum, that you can't ask the question to us. And anything that you think of between now and whenever to the city clerk, because we will be looking at all of this stuff, right? It's our job to introduce the amendments to what's being proposed. Thank you. Go ahead.
And if you have changes, proposals, if you could just get them by like Monday or Tuesday, because changing those into language, or marking a map, is not a matter of stroke of a pen, and so they'd have to be prepared in a way that council could actually do something with them. And so if it just comes in with a general idea, there's not a lot we can do to rewrite. So if you have something very specific, the clearer you have it, and the faster you have it, the better council can look at it.
Thank you, everyone, and with that, the meeting is adjourned.